Okay, well I'm gonna do. We'll pitch our public hearings for our budget.
The pledge or the after?
I think we do the pledge after.
Yeah.
Oh, I hear the gavel sounding up.
Alright.
Gavel in.
Well, thank you everyone. Um, our budget hearing is an opportunity for us to share with the public all the work that the board and the administrative team have done over the last few months to get our budget ready and to actually answer any questions that anyone in the audience has. So that's a little bit unique because most of the time it's more meetings, we listen more than we respond in that moment. So we'll go through um tonight, our mission statement, which drives our decisions for budget development, what the twenty-three, twenty-four proposed budget looks like. We will take a look at a projected tax rate for the upcoming year. Uh, we'll talk about what a contingent budget would look like and how that would affect our district operations if that were the case. Um, some details about the budget vote and our board member election. Um, some information about the new format of voting this year and the feedback survey that we have available to our community. And then just a little summary and close up with the details of vote day. So to start, we always review our mission statement to prepare all students to excel. And this drives all of our decisions, not only through budget development, but throughout the year. Um, our strategic plan supports our mission, our district initiatives support our mission, our building level initiatives support our mission. So in order for us to be successful, we keep this in mind for our budget development as well. So our proposed budget, um, we'll start on the revenue side. So for property tax, we have a tax cap compliant levy projected and proposed at two point oh two percent, which includes the growth factor that's set by the state, which is the growth on assessment that has happened over the town, throughout the town. Um, CPI is well above two this year, but it's capped at two percent as part of the tax cap law. And we have capital exclusions of about eight hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. So those are dollars that were authorized expenditures by the voters in previous projects, so they were specifically voted on by our taxpayers. And that's the difference between the expense and the aid that we get from the state to offset those. So that is on top of the calculation um of the two, two percent, which with all that together brought us to two point oh two. Um, our state aid, so this is the first year we are fully funded in state aid. Uh, when we pulled the presentation together, the state budget wasn't finalized, but just today, or maybe yesterday afternoon, we received the state aid runs. They are very similar to the numbers that we had used during the projection, it was off maybe three thousand dollars. So they were very close. So this brings us to fully funded in our foundation aid. Um, which was an increase of about four and a half million dollars to foundation aid of sixteen point six, with overall state aid at twenty-seven point four million. Um, we did see expenses or increases in our expense base dates, which are items such as transportation aid, BOSI's aid, and those revenues are based on what we spent in the prior year. So as we spend more in those categories, we receive more in the following year in aid. And then the state aid projections maintained not only our normal UPK funding, but also the expansion UPK funding for full day programming, which double, almost doubled our grant, um, an increase of three hundred and seventy-eight thousand to a total of seven hundred and fifty-five thousand. Um, our transfers, which are appropriation from reserves, are very similar to the current year. We have sixty thousand from tax cert and twenty thousand from unemployment, which is exactly the same as this year. And those are matched on the expenditure side in equal amounts. So whatever we spend in those categories, we support with our reserves. And then the debt service fund is um a transfer of a hundred and nineteen thousand five hundred, and those are funds that were left over from pre- premiums in our previous borrowings. So we'll use those to help lower um our tax levy. We're using half of it this year and then we'll use the balance of it next year. And our goal in using those funds in that way was to help keep our tax um levy increase consistent, so that we didn't have one year where it was really high and one year where it was really low. So we applied half of it in each year, so we have a two percent increase this year and we're projecting a similar increase for next year. Our fund balance allocation is the same as it is in the current year of one million dollars, which offsets a million dollars of expenditures in our contingency line. So our total amount of fund balance and reserves that we are applying to this year's budget is about one point two million. Um, the only difference from the current year is the addition of the hundred and nineteen thousand for the debt service reserve. So on the revenue side, we have our increase in our tax levy, which was two percent. State aid increased twenty-two percent, which is our fully funding, uh, fully funded foundation aid. Um, one of our pilots fell off the books, which means that property is now on the tax rolls, so it'll be included in the assessed value of the town. And those are properties that um get reductions as they're doing renovations or some sort of tax breaks with the town, and they pay us directly versus receiving a tax bill um through the assessed rolls. Erie County sales tax, we have um about a three hundred and seventy thousand dollar projection of an increase that's based on where we are this year. Um, the revenues are staying high this year, so that should be a good number going into next year. Community aid is staying the same at seventy-eight thousand, and that's paying for the salaries. Um, and we have an equal budget on the expenditure side for community aid program. Interest earnings is increasing drastically, um, about fifteen hundred percent to two hundred and fifty-seven thousand. And even that number is conservative, the rates are still high. Um, we will far exceed that number this year, but we don't know what the rates will be throughout twelve months from now. So we do anticipate that we'll have some interest earnings, hopefully it'll be even higher than that, but we didn't want to push it too high and then not hit that goal if the rate starts to plummet next year. Um, other revenues is an increase of seven hundred and fifty thousand. Our other revenues are actually staying very similar, that's actually um a budget adjustment that we're doing currently. We receive about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of rebates between medical and re- and pharmacy each year. What we've been doing in the past is netting those rebates against our expenditure. And this year we're separating those out, counting the rebates on the revenue side, but then we also increased our expenditure, health insurance budget by the same amount. So we'll see that when we get to the expenditure side. Um, it's just a better way to be able to more accurately capture our true expenses for our health insurance program versus netting those rebates against it and then artificially lowering what that budget might look like. And then the transfers and appropriated fund balances that we talked about bring us to an overall budget of seventy-five thousand, seventy-five million five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, which is a ten point six percent increase in revenues. On the expenditure side, in personnel, we have an, just over an eight percent increase of about two point six million dollars in contractual expenses. So this has um captured expenses for all of our contract negotiations, which everyone settled, which is great. Um, but we also have proposed staffing additions, which we'll talk about in detail in a moment, and the continuation of rolling in some of the positions that we added over the last couple of years with our stimulus dollars. Our plan all along was year by year to start rolling those into our general fund budget as we received the increases in state aid. So this um plan is continuing that process, so we have another five positions that were added that were previously funded with stimulus dollars that will now be funded in general fund. On the benefit side, the ERS rate is increasing from eleven point six to thirteen point one percent. Um, TRS rate is slightly dropping about a half percent to nine point seven six, but it's an increase in our budget because our overall salaries are higher. FICABAD is increasing just over two hundred thousand, again the rate staying the same, but because our salaries are higher, that expense will increase. And then this is where we um also identify the health insurance change. So our projected budget is seven point eight million, which is an increase of about six hundred thousand, but on top of that, we put another seven hundred and fifty thousand to offset that revenue, which is really covered with rebates for pharmacy and medical. And then our workers' comp, we're doing great in workers' comp, we are self-funded with our, um, the workers' comp consortium, and our modification and experience rate is doing very well, so that premium should stay pretty flat. In general support, we have increased about fourteen percent or three hundred and forty thousand dollars. And some of the categories that we increased spending included our liability insurance premium, which goes up about, I think it went up about twelve thousand dollars this year. Um, we did increase our utility lines for gas and electric. We increased our legal fees budget. Um, buildings and grounds, contract services, and materials and supplies, we increased those lines. Um, those were areas that had been cut in previous years when we weren't fully funded. So um, we've been doing transfers throughout the year to kind of cover some of those needs. So this starts to get that budget back to where it needs to be. Um, the establishment of a furniture replacement line. So as our furniture ages, you know, this was never something that we had dedicated funds for. We would buy new furniture if we had a grant or if we had a little extra money at the end of the year, but this allows us to actually plan for um a replacement cycle, not in one specific building, but across the district. So Mr. Rampado is going to have that line in his budget, and then he'll work with the building administrators on their needs so that we can prioritize not only the first year of spending, but what the needs are moving forward into future years. And then we increased our budgets for copy paper, which was exceedingly expensive this year, and um some HR software that we're purchasing to help monitor and track some of the tasks in that office. Um, we maintained our one hundred thousand dollar annual capital outlay project, and we'll talk about that um in a little more detail in a moment. And we increased our contingency line from one million to two million dollars. Um, one million of it is offset by fund balance, which we talked about on the revenue side, but then we also added another million dollars of expenditure to that line. And that was twofold. One, it helps us cover any unanticipated expenses or unknown expenses that might come up during the year, but also during the development of this budget, there was a proposed set aside for high-cost tutoring of just under five hundred thousand dollars. And we didn't know if we were going to have to carve that money out of our budget and specifically identify it to tutoring or not. So it looks like that's not going to be included, but we would have been able to cover it using this money if it had been included. So if that money's not needed, it won't be spent, and then it'll stay in that contingency line. And then the other million was offset by fund balance. It's just, it's a nice way for us to be able to plan for the unexpected and make sure, you know, one of the, one of the most strict rules is that we can never overspend our budget, regardless of what's happening, what students move into our district, what needs the district has, we can't go over that expenditure line. So this gives us a little, um, a little bit of flexibility. Our instruction um component of our budget increased about twenty-four percent, or just over one million dollars. Um, there were several categories that absorbed this increase, but the biggest one was special education. Um, we had several students, um, specifically some of our younger students that are um coming up into kindergarten that look like they may need some additional services replacements in order to be successful in kindergarten. So we wanted to make sure that we were um putting forth a budget that would support their needs, not only the little ones, but all of our, all of our kids across the district. Um, we have some increases to the athletic budget, um, some materials and supply increases, software. And then importantly, which I know all of the principals are excited about, we added some field trip funding back into the budgets. This was something that the district had many, many years ago that was cut throughout the years. Our PTAs and all of our buildings have been wonderfully supportive, but this will allow us to kind of bring a little bit of that back in um in the district and give the principals um a budget to be able to help support some of those initiatives. Our BOSI's budget is, it has a very small increase of about a hundred thousand or two point two percent. Um, again, we have some special education programming in there and some technology software purchases that we're going to be making. Um, transportation has an increase of nine percent or about three hundred and thirty-eight thousand. And this is the second year of our two-year extension. So in this upcoming year, we'll be deciding what we're going to do moving forward, if we're going to try to do another extension or if we're going to go out to it. And then our debt service, all of our debt payments that have been previously approved by our voters are now all, all in place. So the increases are very small, about six thousand dollars of an increase. So staffing changes. So we're very excited and thrilled to be able to recommend these increases and include them in our general fund budget. We have ten point five act-e teaching positions, which will support all of our buildings, um, ELA and ENL, social studies in the high school, uh, general education classroom in Smallwood, um, several AIS positions in Windermere in the middle school covering ELA, math, and reading. Um, our ICT program or integrated co-teaching program, which has full-time special education teacher in the classrooms um with our students who need debt service. Um, we have one that we know we're going to need based on class sizes and two more that may or may not be nee- needed, depending on how some CSE meetings happen this spring and then in the fall. But we wanted to make sure that if we did need to add those teachers in order to keep class sizes where we want them to be, um, we wanted to make sure our budget would support that. So we have enough room in our budget to add two more if needed. Um, our point five speech teacher is our current um employee, and we are increasing that position to a full-time position. And again, it's based on the needs, um, the case loads in speech are really high, so um this will help cover that. And then in athletics, we added six coaching stipends, um, two in football, two in soccer. We are increasing our strength and conditioning program, it was new this past year, so we want to continue to grow that. It benefits all of our students, not only our athletes, but students that are in the building um at any time, whether or not they're on a sport. And um adding a coach to our unified basketball team. So another thing, it's wonderful that that program is so successful. There are too many participants for just one coach, which is a great problem to have. Okay, so in high school, we will also have some sixth assignments, especially in high school and middle school. So sixth assignments are our, um, payments to teachers who teach an extra class. So they teach five a day, sometimes based on schedule or class sizes or electives or whatever the needs of the building are, they might need one more section of something. And this allows the principals to be able to assign that sixth um assignment to a teacher without us having to hire a full additional person. Um, we had six building aids in our stimulus grant that were meant to kind of fall away when the stimulus money ended, but they've been a wonderful resource and have been requested to be maintained by all four principals. So we have rolled those into general fund to help support not only um the supervision, but the flow of the building, um, coverage for lunches, an extra set of hands in the cafeteria. So those positions will stay in each of the buildings. Um, in the pool, we will ha- in each of the pool buildings, the middle school in Windermere, we're adding a teaching assistant, which will help the phys ed teachers be able to offer swimming in both of those buildings. And that sometimes is a struggle because you need an extra person on the deck, they call it eyes on deck, so for safety reasons. So this, um, these additions will allow us to continue our phys ed pool um programming. Um, one of the AIS teachers that we added on the previous slide will um be offset by a reduction in two part-time teaching assistants, um, both are at Windermere. And these positions are both vacant. So um, we've struggled to fill the part-time positions. So during budget development, the um thought was raised, instead of trying to struggle to find two part-time people, let's just get a full-time teacher in place um to support those students. So that is included in here. Um, our middle school assistant principal was added during our um stimulus funding time to help with supervision um and just district and, or middle school initiatives, so we're adding that. As well as a director of curriculum instruction, which will be based in Dr. Shannon's office, to help push forth district initiative, various program oversight, and continue the professional development that we offer to all of our teachers district-wide. Um, we added a laborer in the high school, it's our largest building, it's our most active building, and it's active from early in the morning until late at night. So this just helps um with the maintenance and cleanliness of the building. Um, a one point oh nurse, again, this was something that we maintained during stimulus, and it really has been a huge help. Um, we have one nurse in every building across the district, but now we have this extra nurse. So she either helps out in our busiest building, which is usually in the high school, or if someone needs a day off or calls them sick, we have a nurse that can cover that building for the day versus trying to find a substitute, which is not always an easy thing to do. And then this year, we received a grant for seventy-five thousand dollars to digitize our records. So part of that grant was a part-time records management clerk, but it was only for one year. So if we're going to have this large investment in digitizing our records, it's something that we want to be able to maintain and keep doing moving forward. So we added a full-time clerk in order to continue that work. So all of that is summarized here. So overall, again, matching with our revenues, we have a budget of seventy-five thousand five hundred, seventy-five million five hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. About a seven point two million dollar increase in spending or ten point six percent. With the majority of the increase, um, a million of it is in contingency line, which we talked about, and then um our instruction line and our um personnel benefits. So as part of budget development and our budget hearing, we are required to share with you that all of that information, but in two different formats, the tripartite budget and the component budget. So the tripartite budget breaks all of those expenses into administrative, capital, and program expenses, and then shows you the percentage across each. So our administrative portion of our budget is about nine point three nine percent. Last year, that number was nine point four nine percent, and the year before, it was nine point seven two percent. So the reason I point that out is because as our budget has been increasing, and we have these increases in spending because of the foundation aid that we're receiving, now that we're fully funded, seeing that administrative component actually decreasing, even though all of our expenses are increasing, really just is another indication and proof that we're pushing those funds into our programs and into our students' in- experience and into their areas. And it's not just supporting, you know, it's not just the administrative side. On the component budget, we have general support, instruction, transportation, employee benefits, and debt and reserves. It's just another way to break out the expenses and categorize them a little differently. Um, our outlay project, so this is a list of our past projects. We've done some sidewalk work, yeah, Windermere and Smallwood most recently, parrot that emergency generator and district office vestibule. What are, we're looking to do moving forward is to use that money every year to add security film and enhance security at our first floor windows and glass at our entrances. Some of that's included in our upcoming capital project, but this would expand that even more. So our um idea was that we will start with one building and we'll do as much as we can with that hundred thousand dollars. And then next year, we'll just keep going until that building's done, and then do the next building and the next building. So this was a way to um add that security to the buildings without having a large capital project. Um, our outlay projects are reimbursed at our building aid rate, so when we spend a hundred thousand in one year, we receive about seventy-five percent of that back in the following year. So that's a line that we keep in our budget every year. So overall, here is our three-year budget outlook. We have a balanced budget this year of seventy-five point five million dollars. And as you can see, the next two years, next year, we actually, you know, have another balanced budget on our hands. Um, this is conservative, we have our revenues flat with the exception of foundation aid. We increased foundation aid each year three percent, because that's what was happening this year with any district that was already fully funded. Obviously, that'll change, um, but um it's a good outlook for us to have. And, you know, oftentimes at this point in the year, two years down the road, we were looking at two and three million dollar gaps. So we're in, we're in a good place, and um it's great to see the difference that having that foundation aid for the fund that has made for our district. So our property tax rate, so we did not receive updated assessed values for the town yet. Um, sometimes we have an estimate by now, but they don't finalize the rolls until um a couple of months later. But if the assessments for the towns stay the same, the increase to the tax rate would be the exact same increase to the tax levy of two point oh two percent. So it was an increase of about forty-three cents per thousand of assessed value of each home. But any increase to the assessed value will just push that increase on the way down, because it's just divided out by a year number. Okay, contingent budget. So if our budget is not passed by our voters, um, we are tax cap compliant, so in order to pass, we need fifty percent plus one positive vote. If we, if it didn't pass, we have the option to either adopt a contingent budget, go out for a revote with the exact same budget, or go out for a revote with some sort of a reduced budget. A contingent, if, I mean, back up, if we go out for a revote and it fails again, then we have no choice but to adopt a contingent budget. So in a contingent budget, the tax levy can't increase at all from the current year. So for us, that's about seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. But there are other restrictions that are put in place, they've run contingency. Um, community members and organizations cannot use our facilities without paying the full cost. So not only is that our rental fees that, you know, are, were adopted schedule every year, but they have to pay for, to turn the lights on and custodial time and elect, you know, all of that. Um, and that's, you know, that's not something that we want to have happen. Um, we can't purchase any new equipment, so all of our equipment monies in our budget are separated into specific codes. All of those would need to be zeroed out. Um, we can't perform any non-essential maintenance, so that capital outlay project would not happen. Um, capital expenditures outside of an emergency situation, so if there was a huge storm and there was damage to the roof, we could fix the damage, but we wouldn't be able to do any other improvements or renovations to the properties. Um, any non-unionized employees would be frozen on their salary, so only unionized contractual employees would receive an increase. And we would see a decrease in our proposed budget of about six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. So instead of a seventy-five point five million dollar budget, it would be seventy-four point nine, and the increase would be sub nine point six percent. So what will we be asking of our voters on May sixteenth? We'll be asking them to weigh in on a maximum spending limit of seventy-five point five three eight million dollars in our budget with a two point oh two percent tax cap compliant increase. And we have two board of education seats up for vote with three candidates running. And anyone who's interested in learning more about our candidates, their um biographies are in the newsletter, which has been mailed out to all families in the district, and it can also be found on our district website. New this year, um, Erie County has switched to electronic full books. So instead of big fat books that we can flip over and look for everybody's name, um, we'll have iPads, and our election inspectors have been trained on how to use the iPads. Um, Ms. Custody has worked on a little bit of reformatting, so our vote's gonna look a little bit different this year because we need to make sure they're all plugged in, because those iPads need to stay charged all day. But our voters will- But our voters will approach the poll workers, give them their name. They'll be looked up on the iPad. iPad will flip, they'll sign, and they'll be given their ballot. So it won't be much different for our voters, other than they'll be signing with their finger or silo, um, silence instead of a pen. Also new this year, we have on our website a survey for community feedback. So every, every year, every other year, every year, we do an exit survey. And we were getting very similar information and responses from our voters who are coming in. And it was limited to the people who were coming in to vote. So at our prior board meeting, the board had a conversation about the effectiveness and usefulness and how we could get more information from our community. So now we will have a community feedback form live on our website all year round. So anyone can provide feedback, not only on our budget, but also on our foundation aid plan. So because we received more than ten percent of an increase in foundation aid, we're required to do a foundation aid plan and share details with the community on how we're spending that plan. And we've done this the last two years as our foundation aid has increased. So this is not different, you know, we've been doing this all along. But one of the requirements of our foundation aid plan is to seek community feedback. So while we've been doing that the last two and a half years, this is just one more way for us to get feedback from our community. So you can click on either of the links. They're both on the website and it opens up a form. And you can just put your feedback in there. And then our foundation aid plan, our letter and our details on what we've added and what we've used those increases in foundation aid for over the last three years are also linked there and included. So what are the facts of this budget? It focuses on instruction, health and safety, and supports the social, emotional needs of our students. That's why you saw a lot of staffing positions being added, AIS positions being added. All of our programs, our athletics, our extracurriculars, either remain as they are or they're growing. We're adding positions and enhancing those programs for the experiences of our students. Our fully funded foundation aid allows us to put forth a balanced budget with all of these increases and maintain a consistent appropriation of our reserves and fund balance. Our levy is tax-kept compliant and our past budget allows us to have our community continue to use our facilities as they are now. So, vote day is Tuesday, May sixteenth. Several of us will be in the high school gym, waiting to see everyone and greet them as they come in to pass their vote, to cast their votes on the twenty-three, twenty-four budget and two Board of Education seats. So if there are any questions, either from the board or the community, I'd be happy to take those. Yes?
Community education. I wasn't aware the district was still doing that.
We are doing that. It's mostly focused on our students. There's not a lot of adult community education, but that is definitely something that we've talked about specifically over the past two years as we've come out of COVID, of growing our community education program. But right now, it's definitely focused on students. We run basketball club, a wrestling club. We run a summer camp for kids, grades three through eight here, actually, middle school. Tennis is another big one. How did I forget tennis? There's a couple of them. So it's definitely student-focused right now, but it is definitely something that we're looking to grow in the future.
Yeah, they used to have quite a program at one time.
And I know there are other districts that have, you know, a very large adult education program. So it's something that we're looking to get back into.
Yeah, okay.
Does anybody else have any questions? All right, excellent. Well, thank you so much. And that concludes our budget hearing.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Then I will call the board meeting to order if we can stand to say a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody, for coming. Visitors wishing to speak, I understand, you know, we have some, so.
Should I come up there or just stand?
You can come up there. You can state your name and.
I'm Julia Fowler. I am here with my husband Neil Fowler and a mother of four. We came to this neighborhood in two thousand and six when my hair was brown and I had a lot less wrinkles. But I'm here today because one of the reasons that we are still here, we actually intended for Buffalo to be a pit stop for us. We didn't plan on saying, but as we moved into this community and became part of the schools, we just, I mean, the people, the role models, the families that we got to know were the reason that we stayed. You know, pretty standout families like the Dempseys and the Naggies and McLaughlins, actually. Smiths too, actually, we've crossed paths a lot. But we see, one of the drivers, though, not only just in the school, was the community, the YMCA program that was here. It was housed here initially. We had the pool here and all four of my children swam with that program. Unfortunately, that program moved out to when they built the new Y, beautiful facility and stuff, but it really did remove that community feel. And fortunately, we had support from the board to rebuild that program back here with the Amherst Tiger Sharks, Mark Smith himself, Bridgette and Ireland, some community leaders. And that's been a very, very strong program. So when we talk about community programs that lead to strengthening our schools, this is a perfect example of that kind of program. Since that program's been in place, I feel like our swim program here at the school has gotten a lot stronger. We, the boys team has learned since then in a long time, I think almost ever. The girls program won sectionals for the first time ever in two thousand and twenty-one and just continues to be a really strong program. And sure, we didn't do a study, but I like to think that those two are directly connected. So unfortunately, the reality, though, is that we actually have a sub, well, we have a pool, which is, we're grateful to have a pool, but it really, it's an old pool. It does not help in bringing the parents and the families together to watch. It's, we need, we basically need a new pool. There are other pools in the area, not really in the Williamsville district, but the Marigold Pool is big. It's beautiful. And then the, what's the pool that's over here? Clean Hill. Clean Hill's got a beautiful pool. It's not huge. It's not over the top, but it's a beautiful place to go, be with families, cheer for your kids, and really just enjoy the atmosphere. So I don't think we need to go over the top, you know, in terms of promoting adult education and community programs too. I think a swimming pool has a lot of opportunity with that as well. So there's a lot of reasons I can go into over time. But I just, I feel it's a big improvement that we can make in this already amazing school system, so. That's it. Any questions? No? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Fowler, were you coming up too?
I was not.
Okay.
I couldn't say it any better.
All right, then we move on to reports of boards and committees.
Thank you, yes. We had a policy committee meeting last week. And we discussed seven policies, which are on our agenda tonight to vote to approve. For the policies, thirty-four-ten, seventy-three-thirty, sixty-one-thirty, and seventy-six-seventy were just verbiage changes, so nothing really to review there. Policy sixty-five-fifty was revised to reflect Labor Law Section 206, the revision there to provide time and space for nursing mothers. And policy seventy-five-twelve added some information about educating parents for the importance of lead testing. Finally, policy eighty-four-fifty was changed to reflect the increase in hours of instruction for homebound students for the Commissioner of Education. So the policy was rewritten, so they addressed those additional hours and that was pretty much it. Anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Will be any other reports?
I was just going to share a couple of recent ECASB events. On Thursday, I had the opportunity to attend the BOSI's promotional program at the Kenton location. And they've got a really great facility. They, they moved their auto collision shop out of that location and consolidated it with the Harkness location. And was, were able to put three new programs in at the Kenton location, so animal science, exercise science, and electrical. And they had a bunch of students there and had us tour through five different rotations throughout the facility. And it's, it's great. There are so many programs offered through the BOSI's program, through the standard BOSI's programs, the new visions programs, the connections, new visions programs. Just really, really great stuff. So in the future, you know, I think they do one every year at one of the BOSI's facilities. So it's really great to see that. And then Saturday, Mrs. Arrington and I attended the Buffalo Schools Road Rally that ECASB arranged, which was a scavenger hunt setup where we visited different schools in the public school system. Really, you know, at schools I hadn't seen before and locations and, you know, it was just a lot of fun. And, you know, it was really well put together program from ECASB, so just a couple of fun things. The programs are really great. It'd be great if some of the other board members wanted to attend programs at ECASB.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Quickly prompted us to spring into action to develop a full-day program for the current school year. So a year into the first year of implementing full-day pre-K, I've invited Mrs. Shanahan, or Dr. Shanahan, to give you an update on how full-day UPK is going. So welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Canales said last year was like shock and awe, excited, but it was quick, quick work on our part. So, and I also felt like when I gave you the presentation of like the schedule and the day, you didn't really have the opportunity to get a sense of what it felt like to be in those programs, because they were so new. So you're going to get a little bit of that tonight. So last year, what was just referenced was we added four full days, two in Windemere, two in Smallwood. There were seventy-two full-day students and seventy-four half-day students. Before I get into what the day actually looked like, I just want to talk a minute about the foundational underpinnings. Our littlest learners, sometimes when I, I'm going to show you some video to make it come alive today. And when you're watching the video, you can't deny how adorable they are. However, the planning and the curriculum and the intentionality of the work that was done to get this launched, I don't want to lose sight of that as you're seeing these excellent learning moments. So for the curriculum development, we did base everything, obviously, on our New York State standards and also the research around play-based learning. Play is fun, but play is where your cognitive, social, emotional, behavioral, physical development occurs. And so that's a really important part and I'm going to share that with you in a minute. Focusing on social, emotional learning is critical in those interactions and developing those skills in our students. Also, we're fortunate to, as you know, to be a district of multilingual population. And so really focusing on purchasing resources that, that look like our students, right? Making sure that we have materials that people, our students, who have different backgrounds, can identify with was really important. So we did have a strong focus on the linguistic and cultural backgrounds of our students whom we added these days. As well as we always do, go back to evidence-based and research-based practices. And we focused a lot of our work on the National Association for Education of Young Children, which was very helpful. So I'm going to go into some video tonight. You're going to see some play where that social, emotional, physical work is going on. And I'm also going to share with you some of the teacher-led, developmentally appropriate learning that goes on. In that sense, it's, play is good and you'll hear a lot of talk of early learning around play and how important it is. But we also have to have teachers that design that play in a way that moves our kids through learning trajectories. Additionally, we do need to have some explicit instruction, knowing where a child is and where we want to take them to. So those trajectories are really important and I think you'll get to see our expertise in doing that in the videos. And to, once again, there was a great book out by Vivian Paley I read years ago that says you can't say, you can't play. And it's super important that we understand that play is work for our littlest ones. So it provides a foundation for cognitive skill development. It builds a sense of belonging, which is extremely critical in the current climate that we're in. It also has some work through those complex social, emotional scenarios of how to share something, how to take a turn, et cetera. Brain, the brains are always actively seeking and using skills and I put some there. And if you remember your children when they were younger or then these pre-Ks, you watch them negotiating, improvising, communicating, critical thinking, sharing, and sometimes we need to remodel how those things are done. So, in addition, the American Academy of Pediatrics also talks about how play is fundamentally important to learning in the 21st century and how it actually leads for us as adults, developing our executive functioning skills that are critical for our own success. So when I show you some play, there's a lot of work being done. Is my overarching message for you? My other goal was to share with you what does this look like now? What are some images that we can see? So in our schedule that I provided with you at the beginning of the year, we talked about that there's a morning message and there's a whole group literacy component to it. And then this is more of where the developmentally teacher-led piece is going to come in. So you'll get to see our teachers in action for this. I did, these don't happen if you know anything about young children and how long they can sit. These do, these are actually happening at different times for the sake of our time. Tonight, I spliced them together. But I am going to ask you to look for a couple of things as you're watching, besides how cute they are. In the morning message, you'll notice some of the trajectory work that's being done. As students are differentiating between letters and numbers, which they have to be able to understand those constructs, constructs, punctuation. Writing the number twenty-five, Lauren Schittman is one of our curriculum leaders that presented to you earlier in the year. And she talked to you about, with a save-ten method, where we save it, like the number twenty-five has two groups of ten and five ones. What you're going to notice is, we strategically built the curriculum to align vertically from pre-K all the way up. So the language you're going to see the pre-K teacher using is exactly the same language that these children were here when they went to K one and two. And that's critical, because if they can't connect, they might have learned a concept, but they can't ground it going into the next grade level. So I just want to point out between the presentations across the year, that there is this vertical alignment working with our curriculum leaders as well. Then it will break for just a second and we'll shift to the whole group literacy. And then there's something else I want you to notice that might be forgotten if you weren't in the curriculum development phase of things. You'll notice that the teacher will do this, which is sign language, right, for making a connection. We built, when I was a consultant here several years ago, we built a pre-K through, through a curriculum dealing with comprehension strategies. And one of the things we did was we built a common language around the use of the strategies, because they're kind of abstract terms. So as kids move up over time, they can ground their understanding in that. So you will see our pre-K students doing this when they're making text-to-self connections. That will follow those little ones when they go up into kindergarten. That is, that will ground that work there too and they'll be able to continue their growth and development. So important things to point out as far as the critical vertical development that we've worked on within our curriculum. So now enjoy and see if you can find any of all this good work. Important things in that first sentence. Do you know what I noticed? I noticed in my sentence, "Good morning, pre-K one forty-four," there's letters. Another, there's this group right here. These are copies, these are numbers, yeah. And then there's this important thing. Exclamation, exclamation mark. I'm super excited.
I see a mark on the bottom.
Yeah, let's get to that in a minute. So I'm going to say, "Good morning, pre-K one forty-four," with an ex, with exclamation, with happiness. Good morning, pre-K one forty-four. We said it with happiness as well. Can you do it the say-ten way? Two-ten-five, yeah. Friends, today is Tuesday, April day number twenty-five. Anybody brought their math hands? Can you get them out?
I did it.
Mm-hmm.
I did it.
All right, ready? I'm going to say the number twenty-five, twenty-five.
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 Now I'm going to say the ten-way. If you know how to do the say-ten way, do it with me, Shane. Ready? Two-ten-five.
Two-ten-five.
Two-ten-five. Now get your math hands out. Let's do it with our math hands. Ready? Two-ten. Who is your think, pair, share partner? And you're going to need to answer this question with think, pair, share. What will grow? So wait, and think, who's your partner? Find them now. Find them now.
I found.
And then here are little seeds, and there are these literally squiggly things poking out of the seeds.
It's corny.
Talk to your friends, talk to your partner. What's gonna grow? What do you see?
What's gonna grow?
What's gonna grow?
I know. A seed, a seed.
Yes. Really quick, we're gonna read a story called "One Bean," okay?
One what?
One bean. And starting our story, we're probably going to do a lot of this. Wait a second. I'm making a connection. I think I heard this information before, and I'm gonna tell you right now you already have. Yesterday, we had a story called "The Life Cycle of a Bean." And we made the bean seem wet, and then it went open.
Wait a minute. I'm on action.
Wait a minute, you're making a connection. Tell me your connection, buddy.
So, just to show that, I think the background of all the work is being done, I think, hopefully that highlighted for you the curriculum work that's been done and the work that the teacher's intentionally doing. That would be more of a developmentally appropriate teacher-led example there.
Right. Three important.
Breakfast and lunch are also very important. In breakfast and lunch, we can work on our fine motor skills, which you're gonna see in a minute, which is important. That helps us be able to hold our pencil, hold our crayons, do our scissors, and be able to do the work that needs to be done. So, that would be in there, as well as it teaches us, they have time where they can interact with one another, taste some different foods, set up cleanup. So, you'll get to see a little bit more instructions.
Joseph is not here. Come in. Yeah. No. I'm going. I'm here. This is not our world. Now, did you pass it to Cooper? Cooper, you can take your three if you want, okay? Very well.
So, just a little bit of meal time and joining together there, but also time to develop their skills. The mnemonic awareness is one of the biggest predictors of students' reading success all the way up through fourth grade. You've heard presentations by Patty McKay before, our curriculum literacy leader around hegemony and phonics first. Phonics first would be not developmentally appropriate for them at this point, but hegemony is. And hegemony is a mnemonic awareness program that progresses from our pre-K level onto K and one, and then two. So, that, it's really important. And the difference between the mnemonic awareness is phonics is there's no letters involved. I can do the work with it, with or without the letters. So, I don't need to know the name of the letter in order to do the work. It's really auditory, and it's around hearing, and it's really critical at this point. You will notice we are showing them letters, we're teaching them a letter name and a letter sound, but you'll see Mrs. Mayer working specifically on rhyming, hearing beginning sounds. And you'll see one student at the end struggle, and she scaffolds a little bit to get him to create a rhyme, but in phonemic awareness skills, the top two levels are production, where I have to produce that sound, and that is most difficult, as well as manipulation, meaning I take a sound away and I put a new one in on my own without you prompting me. I have to do it by myself. So, you'll see that child will struggle with it, but you expose, push on, she gives some clues and hints, but, you know, the child is or is not ready to hear and do those things at that time. That is fine. It's a more advanced skill.
Here we go. Hum gum.
Hum gum.
Hum gum.
Hum gum.
They do rhyme, yes, they do. Hum and gum, both, and then hum. Have heavy hooves. Let's try it again. Horses have heavy hooves. First sound?
W. X. Y. Z.
Sound is. Letter is Q. Sound is Y. Sound is Y. Letter is Z. Sound is Z. So, yesterday, I said, "I'm gonna say your name, and I'm giving you another word." So, Courtney? Cookie. Did it begin with the same sound? Ruby, can you think of a word that starts with the first sound is R? What's her name? Yeah, Ryan and Ruby both start with a R.
Perfectly fine. She's within her developmental range, which is great. So, those are more of it where the teacher's leading that developmental trajectory. And then there's also time intermittent throughout the day where there's just learning centers. But know that they're designed with intentionality for kids to be experiencing certain things as well. You'll see they're highly active if you haven't been in a pre-K room in a while. In this one in the beginning, they, give them choice of where they're going to go, and they want them to actually pick. So, you'll see her start that process.
The track is open, train is open, block area is open. Let's find out. Ryan, where are you going now? What is that called? Are you going to tackle bow? Are you gonna be the customer? Are you gonna be the cook?
I'm gonna help you walk.
I'm gonna help you walk. Alright, you got it. Oh, Sean, yeah, it's cool. Wow.
Once again, that's a lot of work time, a lot of activity, right, going on in there, but less structured, which is really important for them to have as well. I just have a, two more things. I can't dare not show you math. My colleagues who are, I'm a literacy person, right, so they would accuse me of not showing math. So, I do wanna show you a little bit. This is a Smallwood class for math, and they're using story, but they're also, you know, teaching kids to count, one-to-one correspondence, those types of skills that they need to have as they're moving forward. And interestingly, at the end, she gradually releases them to the point where they're getting their own counters, making up their own stories, and then they have to go back and retell them. So, she models it and moves them along.
First warm-up counting. We go. Alright, we're going all the way to twenty-six today. Ready?
One.
One.
Two.
Three.
Four. Twenty-four. Twenty-five. Twenty-six.
That's what we're stopping at today. So, if I add one more to twenty-six, what will tomorrow?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. How many frogs do I have? Alright, you could use your five frogs on your log. I will use my five frogs. Five green spectral frogs standing on a spectral rock eating some most delicious bugs. Yum-yum. One jumped into the pool where it was nice and cool. Now there are four. How many are there? Let's do this one. How many are there?
Four.
Four green spectral frogs on the. Ready? You did a little bit of math in your head. We were doing so, taking some frogs away. We started with five, and we ended with zero. We started to take them away, we were doing subtraction. Today, you're going to use.
The pen.
No, we're gonna use the dinosaurs. Like, dinosaurs. Done? Alright, now I have to think of my story. Are you ready?
Yes.
So, maybe I can press the keys. Once upon a time, there were five dinosaurs. What should I do?
Five.
Okay, five, okay.
One.
Gone.
Two. Three. Four. Five.
Twenty B's yet?
No.
There were five dinosaurs playing out in the, out all in the mountains. And then, guess what happened? All of a sudden, the rain came down, and the dinosaurs didn't like it. Guess what? Three dinosaurs went into a cave. What should I do?
A cave.
Go through the cave. One, two, three in the cave. How many dinosaurs were left in the cave? How many were in the cave?
Three.
How many did I start with? Oh, my goodness, you got my story. Alright, do you think you can make your own story?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Remember, you have to figure out how many are left, or how many now. How many are left, or how many now? Alright, my friends, I always do my letters numbers from the top, so I'm sorry. I'm gonna do a little line down. Wait, does that look like number five?
No.
Oh, but it's a number, so what are we gonna say? Looks like one. Now, I'm going to draw a little curve. Is it finished?
No.
Let that go. Back to the top. Alright. What did you do? You got it. Good job. Amazing. He always likes to move. I would like to be the happy real life helper. No, just leave it there. Don't you wipe them. Now, make your curve. Yep, you got it. You did it. What did you do?
Her excitement was priceless. And hand over hand is a technique often used when kids are still developing that fine motor skills. So, gross motor is something that is mandatory within a full-day program. So, there's three, we had two physical education teachers that helped work with our pre-K to develop this curriculum, Mrs. Patty Blair and Mrs. Jen Higgins. And when you watch this, you're gonna see three things. Gross motor is right, our trunk, our legs, our arms, all of our large muscle groups. And so, there's three areas of development that they work on. One is locomotor, which is movement. So, that's gonna be your running, your jumping, your hopping, your skipping, your galloping. And then there's gonna be non- locomotor, which is going to be your bending, your stretching, your pushing, your pulling. And then the third one is manipulative. And manipulative is when you're, you know, you're trying to catch a ball, drop and bounce, using a paddle, any type of, you're trying to move something from one space to another or move an object around. So, those are the three things. And they strategically made sure they were all in here for you to see and identify. This is actually good work for them as well. Our pre-K, although our physical education teachers have led this, the curriculum writing of it, our pre-K teachers and their teaching assistants participate in this as well. So. Locomotor. And I really thank our physical education teachers for helping us with that together as well. Final video clip for today is, I'm gonna have to raise the sound. There was a, there were a lot of centers going on, and this was taped, so I'm gonna raise her voice in a minute here, so that we, Mrs. Sancow and I tried to push back the background noise so you could hear. Our English language learners are really important, and working with them and having activities set up that enrich that and look at it as a value added to our classrooms is really important. And so, Mrs. Mayer will share a little bit about that and her students and the complexity of her classroom.
So, in our classroom, we have, we have the ability that kids can speak a different language. We have some kids that speak Arabic. We have a little girl that speaks Quinones. We have a little girl that speaks Farsi. We have two kids who are cousins, and they speak Nepali. And so, the kids have learned from the beginning of the year till now, they've learned English, they've learned how to apply their home language. When they're at home, and then they apply their English language when they're at school. And we're also really lucky because our teacher, Mrs. Ryan, speaks Arabic, and she's able to make connections with our kids. At least, they don't understand what we're asking, and she helps connect with their families and their communities. So, we've been really lucky in that regard.
So, you know, respecting home language and developing, if the home language is well-developed, the literacy in the English language will grow as well. So, equity and access is always critical. Many of our other districts do not provide transportation because it does come as an added expense programmatically. However, if kids cannot get to the program, you see all the rich learning that goes on. We're also denying them access to opportunities to learn. So, we do provide transportation to our students once they turn four years old because that's when we can safely transport them. And even if that happens like a month into school, we can do that as well. But we transport them to and from school. And for us, that was, it was an equity and access issue, and we feel very strongly about providing that. So, twenty-three, twenty-four. We are really excited that we're adding more full-day sessions. So, we have two full-day sessions again at Windermere with eighteen in the class, thirty-six total. Same thing at Smallwood. A5C for next year is going to add two classrooms with eighteen for a full day and one for twelve. That's what they can, they can fit with the size of the classroom. And then AMS is going to take our half-day. So, we're gonna have a hundred and twenty full-day and eighteen half-day students. It's the first time we have been full before registration closed. We have a waiting list for our full day. We're simply out of space. We're out of real estate at this point. We're, you know, hoping with the capital project, et cetera, there may be opportunities down the road. But that is where we're sitting for next year. Questions?
Thank you. I think I'm exhausted watching.
I know. They're actually gonna ask me if we could have some gross motor time during the day.
So, I think that brings us on to new business.
Great. We will need a motion for new business items.
I'm gonna make a motion for new business items, F1, A through N, 2, A through E, 3, A, B, D, E, F, and H.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of approving new business items, F1, A through N, 2, A through E, 3, A, B, D, E, F, and H, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries six-zero. Mrs. Costetti, do we have any follow-up actions? And we will need a motion to convene to executive session.
I'll make a motion to convene to executive session to discuss matters regarding employment of a particular person.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor of convening to executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries six-zero. Thank you, everyone, for coming.